Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Schifrin and I'm calling this meeting to order of the Planning Board on March 11, 2024 at 6:32 PM. I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoxes, present.
Robert Therrien, present.
Andrew Shepherd, present.
And Laura Schifrin, present. The meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Town of Townsend YouTube channel. I do not have any additions or deletions to the posted agenda this evening. I skipped right over the pledge of allegiance. Please join me. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I want to thank all of our veterans and all of our military currently serving, as well as all of our emergency response individuals. We owe them a debt of gratitude. 1.5, last month, February 26, we made the motion to, anyway. The motion was made and seconded. We signed the my lords, but apparently were not caught on tape saying aye. So if I could get a motion to reaffirm the action of the board on February 26 regarding 152 North End Road. And that was the A and R.
I second that motion.
Okay, Robert made the motion.
Yeah, I seconded.
And Carol seconded. And if I'll start with Andrew, please, to go on the motion.
Yes.
Andrew.
Robert, aye.
Okay, Carol?
Aye.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay. Now we have 1.26, review and approve meeting minutes for February 26, 2024.
I can just make one change. I put in the time of the meeting started.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to add.
I didn't see much wrong. Okay. The only thing that was inserted was the beginning of the meeting. The time was just left out, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented with that small change.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the change for February 26, 2024.
Okay, so a second?
Yes, Robert, second.
Okay, so Carol made motion, Robert second. I'll take a roll call vote. And Andrew, can we start with you? Unless there's any additions or deletions or corrections? None?
Aye.
Andrew? Okay, Andrew, yes?
Robert, aye.
And Carol Hoxes, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you. Okay, so Bill Cattigan is supposed to join us at 7:00. So let's get to the work session.
Do you need to ask if Jessica can help one or she said 6:45?
She said 6:45, okay.
Not yet.
Um, can let's go to I think 3.3, I think we're all set. Oh, wait a minute. That's where regulations changes or public hearings first.
Yeah, then you can go through those and look them over and
Right. Did anybody have anything they wanted to go over in those? Adam had made comments. And Andrew made some comments. I reviewed them a bit.
Yeah, I had seen. Yeah, I had looked at Andrews and Adam's comments, yeah.
Are we talking about these things here?
No, that's the master plan that's going to be reported.
The town meeting articles and the
The 175.
Oh, we're with the 175.
175 and also the stormwater. Well, 175, 35, and then 175, 13, and 1.
Yeah, I know. We have 175, 8. There were changes made throughout the regulations, not all, but some.
Yep.
And they were sent, all sent to the county council. He made comments on 175, 13, definitive subdivision. And most of his comments were responded to, but you can go through those. Andrew had made comments and those were incorporated. Some of the things that town council said, you know, in essence, you don't need this.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I struck them out. I took out liberty. So if you want to just review 175, 13 and make sure, you know, everything looks good. As far as the definitions, I took out the definition of perimeter plan entirely because town council said it really wasn't necessary in the regulations. Maybe in the zoning bylaw, but these are regulations, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I accept. I accept, yeah.
Okay. What other things did you mention? That you would need to
The I can't tell who, well, maybe it was Adam. Mandating lengthy extensions following receipt of supplemental materials is problematic.
Yeah, that's gone. Yeah, that was when I was going through the next meeting. Most of it is really putting the fees into the appendix or into the, yeah, appendix E.
Was it appendix E or was it an attachment?
It's actually an attachment, but it's called appendix E, but it's attachment five.
Because it wasn't one of his comments about appendix E?
Yeah.
And I thought your response was it was an attachment?
Yeah, but it's actually attachment number five, appendix E, because I checked that in the code.
Oh.
Is there a number of other appendices for the planning board, appendices?
Okay.
For the planning board, like all the forms are in one appendix and
Okay, all right. So that was a little bit confused because I saw his comment about appendix E and then I saw you say about, so I says, oh, so should this be attached with something, something like a number? Okay.
Yeah, I figured that one out. I got it all. I think there's one, something else on 175 13 that you guys might have to think of.
These look okay. I mean, the articles, the town meeting articles look fine.
Yeah, with whatever you did. Yeah, I had looked up and I didn't have any comment on them.
Andrew, do you have any other comments on the documents?
Not specifically.
Okay, I'm sure this will maybe regain, you know, until, but for tonight, I think we're good. And here's that appendix.
Yeah, so there it is. You can review that and see if you'd like to format a standard.
This being the fee schedule?
Yeah.
Okay, so just a separate, rather than it being all over the place in our regulations, it's just in one place.
Right.
These are the numbers that we came up with when we did the work session.
Yeah. Okay. And I did make up the legal notice, which I put in your folders, but I didn't print it out.
I saw it.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
And when Bill comes, or Mr. Cattigan, now that it comes on, we'll talk about that public hearing, because the bylaw review committee has articles from the warrant that may need to come into that hearing. There's zoning amendments or zoning, you know, affect the zoning bylaw at all. They're going to be in those hearings.
So it's joint?
They're potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, good point. Maybe I should do that and they'll notice.
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Good point. All right.
Because there's just going to be separate from ours. Yep, it's from Ling Perk. Okay.
Good point. Okay, I'll make a note on that now.
Okay, so that was sigma 3, sigma 4. Let's see. Jessica's not on yet. Would you like to do your next data report?
I have a three to three. Okay, so I'm gonna just quickly email her and see if she can come on at 6:45.
This is Jessica. I'm here, by the way.
Okay. How are you?
All right.
Jessica, we can have you do your thing now.
All right.
Just keep it at 6:45, so. And then we have a 7:00, so.
All right. So, yeah, one of my goals, because it's just been sort of sitting, is to try to kickstart the implementation of the master plan. So it's been around for a couple of years and I know that sort of in the background, a lot of boards and committees have been working towards some of their goals, but probably unknowingly, those that are in the implementation table. So what I did was because Planning Board and Board of Selectmen are pretty much spearheading the effort. I went through the master plan and highlighted the goals for the planning board to work towards implementation. So again, it's not, you know, there's no like grade or race to finish everything and check all your boxes. It's a slow and steady marathon. But I did go through and pulled that table together and I added in a column into that table, which has all the different focus areas for each of the different boards and committees. In hopes that over the next several months, again, not just tonight, not the next meeting, but over the next several months, maybe you can focus on one section of that table to just sort of go through and start filling in some of the gaps of things that you have been working on in the last few years that you might not have known are a part of the master plan. And so we can just sort of get an idea of where we're at for the, from the planning board's view and I'll do the same with the other boards and committees that have some of the focuses for the master plan implementation. So I think Beth sent around that table and then I also pulled the applicable narratives from the master plan to meet each of those sections of the table. So if you guys want to start going through it tonight, that's fine. If you just want to sort of breeze through it over the next couple of weeks, I know your next formal meeting is in early April. But you can just sort of on your own go through that table. But I'd love to just sort of see where we're at over the next few months and maybe how we can meet a few of those goals throughout the rest of this calendar year.
Um.
So I'm sorry if that printout didn't look totally, get the column she was talking about, but there is another column.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, it's the 2022-2024 status update that she was referring to. That's in print. And I have it.
For them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can try printing it horizontally, but I'm not hooked up to the printer.
Okay.
So.
I can share my screen if that would help.
I can share mine if you want to.
But that's fine, whatever is easier. But again, I mean, we don't have to go through every single line item and fill it in tonight. But I just wanted to make you aware that this is a big goal for us. And there's, you know, probably three quarters of the focus areas in this implementation table are pretty overlapping through other town reports, through the housing production plan, the open space plan, the hazard mitigation plan. So it's not like there's, you know, four completely different sets of goals to maintain, so.
So basically, our role in planning would be to help
Recording in progress.
Sorry. These collaborating efforts, if you will. The only way we can really, we as a board can do it is to, is really through bylaws and regulations. I know that we met with Energy already, just for an example, but maybe it's already in your last line that I don't have in front of me, but with Energy, we met them. They had a great report. We as a board agreed to put their report and their goals into the master plan. So outside, just for an example, outside of that, what would be, what would we be doing? How do you see it?
Um, I'll give this one, the credit to this one to Beth, but she noticed that through a couple of the different reports from the economic side would just be better representation in a local business chapter or the business association, I think it is. So maybe there's a town representative or planning board representative that attends those events. I'm not sure how frequently they meet. But just to get an idea of what residents are saying about the ability to to run business in Townsend, to open up a business perimeter, especially used perimeter, getting a DBA. What are some of the struggles that they have overcome? One is passing the Community Preservation Act, which I know that at the end of the day is, I think, a very positive thing for the town. But understanding all the ins and outs behind that can be pretty complicated. The Energy Committee, that was the big one. I'm trying to go through these other goals. But yeah, I agree with you, Laurie. A lot of it is bylaw and regulation oriented. So to that effect, we are seeing a lot of interest in having sort of a bylaw regulation facelift happening. The bylaw review committee, which I think Mr. Cattigan will ideally update you on. I believe they are interested in moving forward with some sort of, you know, whole review of our bylaws. We, you know, are in the middle of a grant administrator right now, but we do have someone coming, scheduled to come on board in a few weeks. She has a pretty heavy planning background as well as a grant background. So we're really excited to see what she might know for funding opportunities to hire other outside planning consultants that might not just always be with MRPC.
I just want to go back to, I think you had a really good idea. I would certainly encourage working with the Townsend Business Association. However, in the last five years that I know of, they haven't done much. So there's been no communication, I know because I'm a charter member way back when. And being a small business owner in town, and I'm sure Andrew can speak to this as well. It's not that the town is really welcoming of businesses or makes it easier for you. I mean, I just had to go through another permit thing that I didn't even know I was supposed to have as a DBA. Not any, not a new business, not a new office, just as a DBA.
Where'd that come?
Doing business as.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, well, my bookkeeper mentioned it to me and I'm like, nobody ever said anything to me, so. And I'm in the same, it didn't work out to be bad for me. It's just that it was $50 and it was $20 and it was, you know, whatever.
Is this related to a business license to be a DBA?
I'm a permit from the town.
Right.
To be a DBA.
So.
And I'm sure a lot of people do not know that. I had a business certificate for my corporation
Right.
and my office.
Right.
But I DBA out of that same office for a management company.
Really?
Yeah, so.
I don't have one either.
I, you know, maybe people will hear this tonight, but this is what you have to do. You go to the town clerk. You go to, no, I had to go to the building inspector's office first for the permit and then the town clerk for the certificate. So that was something that I, and let's see, who, one of the first people who started the business association was Dan Murphy, who was town clerk at the time. And I don't ever remember being taught that, you know, as a charter member, because he asked, so I said yes. There was never any instruction. John Barrett did the bylaws for the TBA. So I think there's a lot we can help teach people who want to do business in town. But that opportunity hasn't come up. It used to be very active. They used to have at least eight to 10 meetings a year. So once a month, they would get together in different places. There'd be an annual meeting and, I mean, that went on for 20 plus years. Because it started at Townsend Center Realty. Not, it was not in effect when I was the other office before.
Is anyone involved with the Chamber of Commerce, the Mesova Valley Chamber?
I have tried both of them and I don't have anything to say. So you know, I personally, as a small business in town, I'd rather it be Townsend-related because that's where you're working and dealing with. I mean, if you're looking for outside, you can always go outside. But we have so many changes going on. You want to change the master plan. You want to improve the town. You want to let everybody know, you know, and certainly anybody who comes before us is doing business and you see some of the stuff that we're going through with, they don't have the right plans or they want to do it by hand or, you know, all it's, it's not that we're against the business. But we have rules and regulations we have to go by. This is where we have to feed information to people, have a information night hosted by the TBA. The only thing I remember them doing in the last five years is maybe four years ago with a election debate night kind of thing. Because TBA used to do that every year, but it's been a few years since that's been done.
So. Spoke everything. How about Committee of Businesses? Does anyone know what that is, or Committee of Community Members in Business? I'm seeing.
I don't know. I don't know that.
Okay.
The only thing I knew about businesses was the Townsend Business Association. Where did you get that from?
This is the collaborating entity or responsible entity to implement the different focus areas of the plan. So I was not around when this was first written, but I do know that Beth has some contact information of some of the pioneers of this report. So maybe they have some good connections that we could start with.
I see what she's saying.
I don't know where that came from or heard of that.
There's a, under the economic development, there's a goal that says the town needs to collaborate with the small business community and nonprofit to facilitate discussion and agreement on projects and exploit the collective talents of members of these entities to benefit the town. So the responsible implementers of that are the BOs, Planning Board, TBA, and Committee of Businesses.
Sounds like a great idea.
So that's, I mean, there's the last few minutes that we've been discussing this. I think that would probably fit under that goal pretty well. So again, it's not like we need to meet and check all the boxes for this plan, but you know, have some idea for how to move forward with this. So I think, you know, maybe trying to reach out to some of these individuals, even to just get, you know, an informal coffee and donuts or something together one morning, just see where we're at. I think that would be a really great idea and great start.
I'm just trying to think of what that might entail and I don't know, when, from younger years, you used to honor a particular business that did something in the community. Keys to the city kind of thing. They would have, you know, participation in like Christmas parades and things like that. So that people in the community were aware of all the businesses that are really here. So I don't know just how this all fits together, but but I can see promoting that type of thing and allowing it to be, you know, done in the town. So that business people collectively sponsor a parade or an event or something without any difficulty, you know. So I think in terms of our planning board, we certainly are trying to find ways that we could help support small businesses and
I think one of the things that used to be done, again, this goes back a few years. It'd be great if it could be brought back, was that the TBA or all the members of the TBA, and at one time there was close to 90.
Really?
The last time I heard, I don't know, I didn't even get a bill this year, you know, for the membership. Was maybe around 50. So that's, you know, a great loss when it was building for a while. But they used to do, the association used to sponsor a band concert. So, and when they did that, all the businesses had like a table.
Sure.
And they could promote their businesses. So, and that was a nice event. The only thing that I know of now is they help with the lighting of the Christmas tree.
Sure.
But the other is a good thing. If you could have a public event where all the businesses from town present themselves to everyone, that's a little bit of help, I think.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, Andrew?
I think these are good thoughts. You know, certainly, I think, Lori, you kind of talked about it, being a small business owner in the town of Townsend. There's not that many of us. I've always had more of a challenge with, for my business, with dealing with the state than the town. You know, the town's been pretty supportive and relatively straightforward. Some things I think could be, you know, more streamlined, maybe like getting your DBA or certain things, you know, an education on that, but you know, having the, certainly getting people engaged these days is difficult, whether it's individuals or it's businesses. You know, anything that continues to kind of create that community is important.
I think too, because of what's happened the last couple of three years since COVID, a lot of the small businesses that died during that time didn't come back. Couldn't come back, couldn't afford to come back. And how do we, how do we help them? You know, how do we help keep things in town and support the community? Because whenever they're looking for something, they hit every business in town.
Right.
There's, there's no supporting that business as there is much as giving to the sports, giving to the Girl Scouts, giving to the, you know, it's, everything is
Asking.
Asking.
Right.
And, and you want to And, and you want to support it, but you know, that doesn't help people, you know, pay the bills.
Yeah.
Especially when everything's so expensive.
Um, some kind of a, a committee that every year gives an award for a particular business and what they've done for the town. I think, I think the businesses, this is an opinion, cause I'm not an active businessman, but.
I don't really think that people are looking, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong. Most of the people that do for community, it's because they want to.
Mm-hmm.
They don't necessarily want to be recognized for what they do, but they want, I, I guess you want to pass along a feeling of community. And that if I do this, it's going to benefit the community as a whole. And if the community is thriving, then perhaps all of our businesses will be thriving, you know, too. It's just, it's a mindset. It's a you know, feeling of community. Like it's important to you to do this. So, I mean, I, the only award I think is done in it, it's.
Well, maybe, yeah, I, I'm sorry, it's probably the wrong. But I mean, for example, there are certain businesses that would hire high school kids and uh, you know, and helping our kids in town. Uh, um, and, and, and then there are other businesses that, you know, I've approached to help for support and volunteer stuff and they've been right there and full forward. And um, so like you say, people come to ask for them and what are we doing in return and um, so maybe, I don't know, the town can declare Townsend Business Day or something and um, do you know what I mean? But we probably need a committee to think of promotional ideas that we can do that.
So here's the other thing. How would you propose that that be done? Because I know from personal experience for many years, it's hard to get a full committee together. And especially when they're appointed and not, I mean, it's bad enough for the elected ones. You would need to have your quorum to do your business. But I know that the master plan, for an example, was very difficult for them to get enough of the committee together to make any progress or, you know, meetings were delayed. And I don't, I don't think that something like this would be the same as a master plan because it's so whatever. Where, but maybe something like this would be more of a fun thing.
Mm-hmm.
And perhaps reaching out to, I mean, there's a list, town clerk has a list of the business owners in town. And maybe put out a survey to the small businesses and see if you could get six or eight of them.
Right.
Out of the, I mean, I'm sure there's close to seventy or eighty in town or ninety, maybe more. But maybe they would form a committee, get together and say, okay, this is the list of businesses in town. How can we do something that focuses on business? I mean, go to the source. I don't think it should be a committee of administrators, you know, for staff. It needs to be the businesses.
Right.
To say, and then, then our end, the town's end would be to give them the opportunity.
Hmm.
Whether it's during the band concert or whether it's one of the weekends, you know, kind of thing, to use the common. Generally the best thing rather than an indoor. But if they wanted to do an indoor, I mean, I suppose um, if not the Great Hall, where they could set up booths, uh, maybe the VFW. Or this, I don't know, the school doesn't let you do anything anymore. So, uh, which is too bad because then you could maybe do a regional thing for small businesses. So then it would be Ashby, Townsend, Pepperell. So, I mean, now, now it's in your hands, I think, to try to promote that. Jessica?
Yeah, no, I mean, as you're talking, I'm just sort of thinking maybe like uh, you know, get, get someone from the business community to, cause I, I don't necessarily think it's a, cause the town's not a business. So I don't think we could necessarily host the event, but um, I think we can help spread the word, put up the flyers, whatever, for some sort of like meet and greet the small businesses of Townsend, social gathering or ice cream social or something. And little businesses can give out their, you know, cute little swag and business cards and whatnot. I think that would be a really great way to do it. Fun activity.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that the town needs to use its resources, but if you want to have this, and it is in the master plan, then who better to tell you how to help businesses but the small businesses themselves? But you need to provide the gathering space for them to do that. Cause they're going to be giving up their time as well to help bring the businesses together in town per our master plan. We, we can't say it's all on them and have it in our plan.
Sure. I understand. I follow. Yeah.
Anything else on that? You did this pretty good. And since you have all that experience being a small business, it's like.
It makes sense, but it makes sense.
You know, whenever, when Robert sits here and talks about a plan, I'm all ears and it's all his. Okay. Because I have no experience with that. And everybody is the same. Andrew's got his, you've got yours.
Yeah.
Everybody's got theirs. I can speak to that because I have experienced it for forty something years in town. That's the only reason.
I just mentioned, I know that MRPC does have a economic development plan that's a regional plan. Are you familiar with that?
A little.
Maybe, I'm not familiar with the plan, but I know that we've actually contributed to it um for different projects and and they update it, I want to say every few years, like every three years or something. But I don't know if there's something there we could tap into for planning assistance.
Well, I, I think, I think Lori's right. It's really have to come from the business sources. But I also, um, you take the town of Hull, for example, all the business people there created this some kind of day. I forget what it was. Um, but it was a festival. And all the merchants in town were part of this event. And they had sand castles and whatever they were doing and had their own vendor displays. And then they had like clam chowder contests with all the restaurants and stuff like that. So it brought people from out of town into the town.
Mm-hmm.
And that, again, that comes from the small business people themselves to, to promote things. But as far as the town goes, um, to allow that and to have an accommodation for it like we do. We have the, the hall here and we have the common, like you said. Um, or a, a bike race or something like that that makes an event. So in, in Hull, they had wind sailing contests and they would come up with probably four seasonal events every year.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they were very active people.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we have opportunities, different areas perhaps, and I'm not sure, cause you mentioned the bike path. Like Andrew, um, you know, the Skwanakuk Trail.
Hmm.
Um, the rail trail. If they wanted, I mean, that could be something that the businesses might explore to use. But is there a liability with that? If you had something around the trail or is it not allowed?
We'd have to defer, I think, to um, Bill Rideout.
Yeah.
The Greenways.
For Skwanakuk Greenways.
Okay. So I think they're all great ideas. So I think that something like that is more, I think, even though you're going to encourage the small businesses, it's more community oriented. And when they do the things on the common and they have the um craft fair. That craft fair is mostly people from out of the area. It's not Townsend businesses.
No.
So this would, I, I think, be something that's a different flavor altogether.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that you'd hope to get maybe the saddle shop or, you know, the jewelry guy or, you know, maybe the different restaurants. They've had that too, where they come and they bring their food.
I don't even know half the businesses in town. I go to the Hobart Mall, cause I go there, but that's about, I mean, but there's a lot of other little businesses. I have no idea.
Yeah, they're big here, you know?
It wouldn't be bad for those, cause there's antique shops. I think I've never stopped in, up the, west Townsend. That seemed to be.
They had big red ones.
The barn or something. Yeah, there's like a big, yeah, I've never stopped in there.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be a bad idea to have like um, those, cause I'm sure there's turnover of people who have lived here their whole life that probably, like George Sullivan from my committee would tell me, Carol, you go past the lights, go past the center of town. And go see the other side of town.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So um, Jessica, is that, I think you have to start with an outreach. So whether you survey all the businesses from the list that Kathy Spohr has, that the town clerk has, you know, they, she has everybody's email addresses, so you wouldn't have to mail anything.
Right.
And I mean, it would be a start to see if you could get enough people interested in promoting a day like that for businesses.
Absolutely. Yeah. I was, I was just thinking sort of daydreaming while you guys were talking there about to, you know, if businesses, like you were mentioning, can't actually give up business time to come to a, you know, a gathering, a joint event. Maybe do some sort of like scavenger hunt where if you, you know, if you go to X store and buy, you know, whatever bar or stuff, they give you some little key to a puzzle and when you solve your puzzle, you get a twenty dollar gift card to a business you're choosing or just something just, I mean, that's, that's not like exactly master plan, but that's just to help promote the growth.
Yeah, but the, a lot, a lot of conventions do that if you're a first timer or whatever, you know, stuff like that. And if you did that and actually give the addresses where they would stop and they get to, so then you, you get to know all the businesses.
Right. Yeah. Or you can get a little punch card or something.
Yeah, right.
It would be, yeah, I think that would be really fun. So yeah, I can at least try to get a list of the small businesses and, and just see if they at least have a contact person that we could initiate something.
Yeah.
One of the problems, I think, as far as small business goes, it has to do a lot about visibility and traffic and so one of the things about Townsend, it's not a destination anywhere. Do, do you know what I mean? It's not known as a destination.
Well, it was at one time for antiques.
Yeah.
Oh, man, oh, so people would come from California. They come from all over.
Right.
For the antiques in town.
So um, making Townsend more visible or, I don't know, like promoting tourism in Townsend somehow um, would attract more people here. And of course, the business will go where the people are.
Right.
Um, so.
Be good for business, restaurants, people who are employed and the businesses in town. Um.
I do have, I have.
Yeah. You do have a thought?
I have a thought.
Jeez.
While uh, yeah, Jessica was sharing her, one of her ideas, I don't know if this really fits with like the master plan, but I know when I used to work with Sheila Harrington, we would do some like regional job fairs. And, you know, certainly the regional appeal is nice, but I don't know if like somehow either technologically, you know, facilitating, you know, different businesses that are looking for local employees, sometimes just like trying to find your way in, like for the farm, you know, when we're looking for a, you know, a kid to scrape turkey crap. Um, you know, sure, that may not be the most appealing, but just trying to find somebody who's willing to do that and facilitate that role, you know, they're not exactly going on Zillow saying like, I'd like to go work at the local farm. And you really got to kind of know somebody that has a kid that says, you know, I really want my kid to have this experience. And that's kind of how it's worked. But, you know, you know, finding somebody, you know, I know there's people out there. I know there's parents that I think would want, you know, kids that, you know, specifically that or, you know, working at Townsend Ford cleaning cars or, you know, doing all sorts of different things. That could be, I don't know how it would look, you know, maybe it's just a monthly job board in businesses say, I'm looking for a, you know, a CDL driver or who knows, you know?
I think that'd be a good way to tie in business and the schools together.
Yeah.
Can we do it with the town website somehow?
Can you put an employment thing like that on the town website?
I will have to ask. I don't know the answer to that. I, I, it's a great idea. I just, I don't know the, the rules of the web, so.
Opportunities or something, you know?
Yeah, looking for a post scraper.
A lot of kids like animals and, and I, I'm talking about over thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, you know? And they, they actually want the experience, but haven't had the opportunity. Um, so.
Well, I could uh.
It's like babysitting or gardening or whatever, whatever. It could be a whole slew of things to give these kids something to do.
Yeah.
So I have two thoughts. As I get a, a daily email, it's called Master List. I don't know if any of you guys have heard of it. Um, it's a Massachusetts just news, free news email. And at the top of it, every day, they just have a list. And it's, you know, the town of Mendon is looking for an administrator. The town of Shirley is looking for a, who knows? And whenever I've had friends ask me about jobs, I'm like, hey, you should check this out because like I need active job board. But um, not to like douse my own idea, but I could imagine uh, some sort of illegal exposure if the town is seen as recommending a job that may not be a safe job or a, a good fitting job.
Oh.
You know, I don't know.
That could be anything.
That'd be, that's true too.
Community bulletin board.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, that's more what it is, yeah.
Yeah, bulletin board. And then just, and then people make their own calls. If it's something that is something that they're, I think they're familiar with, they make their calls. The town's not involved in that.
Yeah, you're just facilitating.
Yeah, facilitating, right. Thank you, Jessica.
Great. Thanks guys. Yeah, well, I think that's a really good, and again, we don't have to do everything, just little baby steps. So this is a really good idea that I think would capture a lot. So.
Yeah, and be fun rather than arduous.
I know. Goodness. Who doesn't love a good business gathering? So.
Okay. So um, we did have an appointment with Bill at seven o'clock to go over the bylaw review update. Bill, it's all yours.
Uh, well, we've been uh, we've been working on a bunch of different things. Um, and only at this point, two of them are issues for the planning board. Um, so there's things like um, the council on aging, there's an error in the in the, the um, existing bylaw that we're correcting.
Okay.
Number of people on the committee or something like that.
Okay.
I don't have a, a colored printer, so I, it is, it, it says four years and it's three years.
Okay, so there's edits that need to be made.
Right.
Versus something major.
Right. And then uh, we're proposing a, a, a bit of choreography on the uh, outdoor lighting bylaw. So at this time, the town has two. We have a general bylaw, which is, is labeled the public outdoor lighting bylaw. And we have a zoning bylaw, which is just labeled the outdoor lighting bylaw. So um.
What is, if it's outdoor, what's the difference between public and outdoor?
You got me. Um, I find it confusing and I think a lot of people have found it confusing. So we're trying to take some of the confusion out of it.
And you're just going to make one?
Yes, the plan, the plan.
Okay, I was going to say, why do we keep it two?
The whole thing's got to be simplified.
One general, one general bylaw. One general, one general bylaw, and then, so what the, uh, what we want to do is delete the zoning bylaw about lighting, so, um.
And just making a planning board bylaw?
For lighting?
No, a general bylaw. A general bylaw.
General bylaw, so you guys aren't involved.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
What's the difference between like a general bylaw and the zoning bylaw?
Oh, um, a zoning bylaw takes a two-thirds majority to pass or change or anything like that, to edit the zoning bylaw. Uh, general bylaw only takes the simple majority, town meeting.
Oh. And, and so, and right now, that's what they are?
No.
Yeah.
General bylaws?
No, there's.
The, there is a general bylaw on lighting that's called the public outdoor lighting.
Oh, the other one is zoning, and you're gonna get rid of the zoning one and just hang with the general one.
And, and in our discussion today, you know, there.
Yeah, so what does it take to get rid of it?
Well, that's on the screen right now.
It'll be changed if I may.
Well, you, it has to.
Two-thirds vote.
Yeah, it'll take a two-thirds vote to delete the zoning bylaw.
Right.
It's repealing it.
And you need to address it in your hearing, that's all.
Yeah.
You know, so that.
All on the first, April 1st?
Right, so that, so that we cross all the di, the Ts and dot all the Is for the Attorney General's, you know, due diligence. So, um, today we were discussing, uh, having a single warrant article that does both of these. So that would require a two-thirds majority to pass, because the zoning part of it would require two-thirds majority, so the whole warrant article would require two-thirds majority.
You're changing the zoning bylaw.
Is that allowed?
Yes, so Adam, Adam says we can do that, yes.
To combine them?
Yep.
Yes.
It makes it, you know.
Okay, so it's gonna, so it's gonna become a general bylaw with.
And delete the zoning.
A two-thirds vote.
Yes.
But in the future, should you change the general bylaw, it only require.
Simple majority, yes, yeah, that's the idea. So that was, that'd be the, uh, outdoor lighting, and it, it apparently, it doesn't, um, we've had Michael Brown involved, and he's, he wrote the original bylaw, so, we've, we've got the experts. And, um, uh, you know, he hasn't, he hasn't changed very much in the bylaw at all. But we think it might, may, may be easier to get people to comply if it's a general bylaw, as opposed to a zoning bylaw. We'll see.
Okay, I mean.
Then, um, yeah, there's another bylaw, a general bylaw with, which is a noise control bylaw. So, we'll see what happens with that.
So the noise control bylaw is currently what?
No, we don't have anything.
We don't have one?
Yes, so you can make whatever noise you want, and there's nothing anybody can do about it. The only, the only bylaw, we, we have some, um, special permit bylaws in our commercial districts that say you can't make, you can't set up a business to make wood pellets, because somebody thought that was noisy, I don't know, but. So, the thing, the nice thing about having a noise bylaw would, would be that you, you could delete stuff like that, and people could do what they wanted, as long as the noise at the property line didn't exceed a certain level.
How do you know what that level is?
Well. Well, um, the way that, the way that it's done, um, in the Commonwealth, for the most part, is using the Board of Health to enforce it. And, um, so they have to rely on their agent, the Shoba, and I talked with, um. Yeah, and, uh, he says, oh yeah, we're doing that.
Well, I had some comments about the zone, uh, the noise bylaw. And they did a lot of work on, um, trying to come up with something. But some of the, I, it just got so complicated, and so, when you start thinking about practical and realistic enforcement, so, and some of the feedback I've gotten is these, you know, when we have any kind of bylaw, you have to have someone enforce it, and what agency within the community to do that. And if you really think about it, those complaints are disturbing the peace type of complaints, which really needs to be addressed by the police department. And the police department doesn't want to do it, you know, it's another thing, uh, that happens. And then, trying to do it.
They can get a disturbance of the peace.
Anyway.
Request anyway, you don't need a bylaw for that.
Exactly, that's my point. And when we look at the state standard, um, which is under the health department, it's all based on this really technical decibel ratings.
Oh, yeah, that's what I expected.
Right, and it's, it's, I, I, I just think the whole thing, it's not enforceable just because of it's impractical to enforce. So I was proposing that we simplify that, so that we can give some kind of barometer or standard to the police department, uh, such as if several neighbors complain over a certain period of time, or there were so many complaints, um, you know, some, to describe some kind of priority of how big this is. Because when you have a disturbance of the police, of the peace complaint, law enforcement shows up and they try to calm it down, tell people be quiet, and you know, and they don't try to really arrest anybody or fine anybody.
But that's their, that's for them to decide, not us.
Exactly, so, but if we give them a little more of a, a limitation on the magnitude of a complaint, in other words, relating it, instead of all this technical language, relating it to, um, if, if, if the police department has, uh, six complaints within a week, um, they have some kind of bylaw that they can do more with, and, and, and impose a fine or a penalty.
So where did the level of come in? Where did that come from?
Um, actually, the town of Pepperell has a bylaw that's almost the same as what we're proposing.
Okay.
General bylaw.
General bylaw.
Yeah.
And, but we don't know where that came from.
Oh, there's a.
Like, are they?
There's a, an association of boards of health in the Commonwealth, and they have made recommendations for this stuff.
Alright.
So I imagine that's where it's come, come from, but when I find something I like, I don't really care.
So, I, I think, I understand what you're saying, but to what you're saying, if this is becoming the norm for small communities as a general bylaw, and their, and our Board of Health will do this, but you know, the first people on the scene are gonna be the police. They're not gonna call the Board of Health. Somebody who's complaining about this is not gonna call the.
We're making some changes to the general bylaw enforcement procedures as well, so.
Well, I think some of the.
Easier to.
Some of the, some of the discussion that came about was the first question, why was it going to the Board of Health that didn't make an obvious.
Decision.
Right, and then the second question came up, is the discussion of talking with Rick, who is response, you know, our agent with the Mishobor Board of Health. And then, the semantics of actually doing it with this decibel rating thing, um, I heard that we'd have to contact Rick, Rick would have to go to Worcester to get the decibel machine, and it was just like, the whole thing just sounded so ridiculous and so impractical.
Does the police have one?
Oh, I have one, though.
Okay, so, alright.
I could lend it to anybody that wants one.
So.
In fact, you could get it for, you know, about thirty-five bucks, so.
So, I, I think that's probably something, I, here, here's what I think. General bylaw, okay, similar to other areas, okay, police know about it, Board of Health knows about it, we're done. I don't, I don't think we can, uh, make it any better. We don't do this, okay, the professionals do it. And if this is what they're doing in the other towns, if it ain't broke, I don't fix it, you know? I have no, that kind of plagiarism is okay.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I always look and see what Grotton is doing, you know, because if, if you could get it away with it in Grotton.
Andrew, any comments?
Alright, so the other thing that applies to the, the planning board is, for your hearing, is, uh, some amendments to the accessory apartment.
Okay.
Bylaw, and of course, I don't have them.
That might be interesting.
Screen, Bill, if that helps.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Great, um, thanks.
Where are your first ones?
I'm trying to remember.
I know you used a different font, uh, right here, I think, uh.
Oh, yeah, um, one of the problems with the current bylaw was that, if you read it carefully, the applicant had to actually complete the recommended modifications recommended by the Board of Health before they could apply for the permit, so, we haven't been.
This is new.
No, no, well, the change, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fix, we're trying to fix this, basically, because the, the, uh.
Oh.
The, you guys, you redid the bylaw a couple of years ago, I don't know.
No, it was quite a while ago.
Three, four, five years?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, that's, that's not that long ago, my skin, sorry, but, but anyway, uh, um, I'm trying to fix that.
Is it an error in the verbiage?
Yeah, that's all, we haven't, we haven't been paying any attention to that, because it's, you know, it's, it's kind of ridiculous to say to the applicant, you applied too early, you need to go do all this stuff to your septic system per the Board of Health before you could even apply, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to fix that, um.
I think C was added as well, is that adequate provisions to be made for ingress and egress, and then you added this?
Oh, yeah, that's one of the other issues, is that, um.
Yeah, but that's like a, that's a building code, a fire code, and a Board of Health code.
I know, but it wasn't.
Ingress and egress, you have to have two.
The problem is, we've been getting applications where people say, oh, I'm gonna use this window as an emergency exit.
Oh.
Okay, and we say, we're not qualified to make that decision. So we put a thing in here, go get a note from the building department that whatever you're doing for emergency egress and, or.
It's a certain size window is allowed.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
I'm sure it is, but.
It is, fire department, there's a certain size window that's allowed for an egress. Not an ingress so much.
No, 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 the, the building code is very specific on that stuff.
So, but, but it, it's not up to us to make that decision, we want, we want the building department to do that.
Okay.
And the other thing is the amount of square foot, because the square footage of the apartment, so in a case where you have a, an apartment with like a staircase to the basement, it's not clear that that's not supposed to be counted in the square footage of the apartment.
Staircase.
Yes.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be, really, it's not square foot usage.
Traditionally, we have not included the, the area of a staircase.
Okay.
Well, I, I just recently.
In the, in the bylaw to, to specify that the.
On the same subject, just recently, I encountered an issue with, um, in the city of Pittsburgh, where they have accessory apartments as a right in a particular neighborhood, okay? Um, and then, um, anything else was, was prohibited, okay? So the situation.
Well, that's discriminatory.
So the situation occurred where one of the people in this RA district, uh, had a vacant piece of land, and they wanted to build a single-family home on it. And the circumstances with the family was if they weren't able to accommodate the mother in the basement, they'd have to be forced to sell the property, and it was a financial hardship. So, what happened is the zoning bylaws, as written, didn't address, so the applicant's saying, yes, the house and building is over eight hundred square feet, but I'm not adding on to my house, it's gonna be part of the basement of my house. So, that, in other words, here was a situation that did not fall in what was intended when they made the bylaws.
Okay, so.
So, in other words, they're designed, they're providing the right for an accessory apartment to an existing building, but not to a new one.
Do you wanna address that, Bill? I mean, we don't wanna do something like that.
What?
We don't, we don't wanna be discriminatory.
Where does it say best, do you know what, what section they're talking about here?
No, I, I, I think just.
It says, I think it says, uh, there's some basic requirements, it can't exceed eight hundred square feet or percentage of the size of the existing building.
That was the old bylaw, at a percentage of the.
Oh, it was?
Well, this one has both, but it's the lesser, it shows the lesser.
The lesser.
Thirty-five percent.
Right, thirty-five percent, that, that's what, that's what we had in the old.
General is less?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, so in the old bylaw, you could have more than eight hundred square feet, if you had a big house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, but, um, when the planning board decided, no, eight hundred was gonna be the max, so.
Not your lawn.
I'm trying to think of what else.
Oh, yeah, let me see, uh.
So, I don't think we touched anything in the affordable part.
No.
I don't wanna get into that.
No, 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 yeah, but I think that was.
Well, I was concerned about that, um, because.
Well, right now, that's okay, that's what we decided on, the eight hundred square feet.
No, no, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, uh.
And that's allowed anywhere in town, there's no.
I think that's it, huh? Because it, the whole, I mean, a horrible piece, we'll be taking care of.
I think that's terrible that Pittsburgh did that.
Well, my point is.
We're not gonna do that here.
My, my point is, I think it needs further review, all of this, before we make a recommendation to the town.
Well, he's just doing edits here, this is already in play.
This is, this is stuff that I wanna fix now, okay?
Yeah.
And, but, um, what we're, what we're gonna be proposing also is to, to do, um, to a, um, contract with a, a zoning consultant people to basically go through the entire bylaw, and they will be making recommendations on, you know, things that they think we should change. Now, that's gonna be, uh, probably a, they're talking eighteen months minimum, um.
How much money?
It's not that much.
Fourteen-five, yeah, fourteen-five are comprehensive, uh, is our comprehensive quote right now, for the entire town.
Yeah, I remember seeing that quote, you had, I did the thing, I did read that, yeah, and I was saying, you should go for the full thing.
Yeah, well, and, and we could do it over multi-years, and they can bill us, so we won't have to, you know, appropriate the whole fourteen grand in a single town meeting.
What is that gonna do? Why, why is it saying eighteen months, and then they can do it over multiple years? Are they use, what kind of data are they using to come up with this? Is it just gonna be like other zoning bylaws, or is it gonna be particular to a town this size?
Yeah, they've got, they, they have a lot of contracts in the state. Yeah, they've got, they, they have a lot of contracts in the state, so they.
Taking into consideration.
Legal, yeah.
Um, no sewer. Wetlands, general.
Oh, yeah, no, it, it, it sounds pretty good to me, I mean, you know, I was, we had a great guy in uh, we had uh, what was it called? I can't remember, but in the eighties when we did the bylaw last, we had a consultant on that. They helped us with the open space plan. And the whole, the whole contract was like thirty-five grand or something. So we paid actually more for it in the eighties than this quote.
Are you kidding me? For what? Don't get me started on the open space.
Yeah, me neither, I'm not a fan.
Well, it was, this was, this has been revised since we did that.
I'm the tier person.
Oh, yeah.
And don't get me started.
Well, we did all the things that you were supposed to do.
It was done now with uh MRPC, so.
Yeah, as far as the accessory. Unit.
Grant money.
The accessory unit goes, I think it should be very basic at certain parts of town or wherever would have that by right.
I believe that should be too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
You know, without all the accessory departments.
Yeah. Absolutely. Especially today.
Yes.
You know, I don't understand why everybody's on rails for as a right, because a, a special permit is not that big a deal. I mean, you know.
Well, it shouldn't have to be family, it shouldn't.
Oh, it shouldn't have to be.
No.
No.
Oh, well, I think, I think you're going to find some disagreement on that subject.
It's their home.
Well.
And there's a lack of housing, and if the, I'm going to just go back to the Board of Health regulations. If the Board of Health says it's okay to have this much in your home, and your septic system will accommodate it, then you should have every right to do that. It's your home.
Look at the family profiles we have today.
Today, it's changing so much, kids are moving back.
Older people are selling their big homes to their children.
And they want to still be there.
Exactly, without leaving town. I mean, these people have been paying taxes for how many years?
Yeah. Oh, I mean, there's no argument about having a place for your kids or your, for your parents. That's family.
No, but, okay, so the family dies, and your grandkids come in, or your, or.
Grandkids are still considered part of the family.
Well, you know what? Everybody's family. Everybody's family.
Well, yeah.
You choose your family.
Yeah.
A special permit means you have to go and present yourself at the mercy of somebody else based on some kind of hardship that you can create. When, in reality, we have situations where we have people that it, it would apply to me, for example, I have an older, larger home. So I'm retired, I'm on fixed income. So to have another accessory unit to help me subsidize and allow me to stay in town, there are people that could use that.
People in that position.
Right, exactly.
Absolutely.
So there's a variety of parent family profiles out there. Just, and then again, a lot of people come to get a special permit. They're very, it's an urgent thing for them, it's a very important, huge thing. And it's a significant uh investment too. And to tie it on a particular function or a typical hardship, when that hardship is gone and have it revoked after you invested all this money in, in, you know, building this unit, um, it's just so not right.
I agree. Anything else, Bill?
That's it for me. You guys are obviously entitled to try to rewrite the accessory apartment bylaw if you want to.
Well, there is a um request as part of the DLTA this year uh to look at the accessory apartments. So that is hopefully going to be uh accepted by MRPC. So part of our DLTA.
And I work on it.
Hopefully be that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how that'll come out, but that.
No, you don't, you don't know until you go to town meeting whether people are going to say, yeah, yeah, let's do it.
I mean, and in a, in a way, you're talking about somebody's own property.
No.
But when the state comes in and starts delivering people here, and we have to find a place for them to live.
Right.
Where, where is that going to be? You going to start invading people's homes?
Yeah, how do you get rid of them if they're not happy?
It's going to come to that.
And they won't be happy, because never enough. But meanwhile, you've worked for your home.
Buy back the poor farm and put them up there, right?
As far as the um hearing.
That's what they did in the depression, they had the poor farm.
As far as the hearing, you had a suggestion?
Yes, that'd be joint? Yeah.
And how it's going to run? The public hearing on April first, how do you want to run it? Two boards, you know, the different.
No, we don't, we don't want to, I mean, we'll just come to your hearing. I'll come, you know.
Yeah, but you're going to be presenting a zoning change. I have no problem with it being joint, and it doesn't, it doesn't have to be your whole board. I think it should be, I think we should let the.
It has to be a quorum if we're going to have a joint meeting.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that would be a good idea, though, because to speak to the lighting bylaw, I'm assuming you're going to speak.
Well, I don't know, the, the lighting bylaw has nothing to do with the planning board.
Right.
Or the noise bylaw.
Well, we.
But you want to present them.
The repeal of the lighting bylaw, but, I mean, how much of a presentation is that?
Not much.
We want to delete.
But the thing is, it's kind of the hearing.
Yes, I know, that's, that's just a technical detail that it needs to be addressed in the agenda for the hearing. But in terms of how it's presented, I don't, I don't see a big problem with that.
I mean, I do, I would imagine people might ask why, but.
Well, we could run it by Adam and see what he recommends.
Please do.
Okay.
I think it's easier if we just have a joint, it, and it doesn't mean, this is for the notice. I don't think it means, I mean, the planning board will call it, I don't think it means that you have to have a quorum to call it, but certainly they could speak to it. In the, in the hearing.
Yeah. If, if, I guess, in a sense, it doesn't have to be joint, because if the Board of Selectmen had accepted their warrant articles, then technically, it's up to the planning board to hold a public hearing. I mean, it's not, and then the planning board creates a report um for town meeting. So, I mean, I think it behooves the bylaw review committee to attend and defend the articles, because the other ones that are bringing them, um, and the planning board may have questions that they, you know, can't answer, so.
Yeah, but I thought that this was going to be, yeah, he, he's representing the um review committee that was appointed, but he's presenting a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw.
Combined, yeah.
Well. No, that's.
So it's not zoning.
That's a warrant article, okay?
It's a warrant.
So, part of the, part of the validation, I guess, of the warrant article is the planning board has to have a hearing on anything that's a zoning bylaw change.
Right.
So deleting the old.
Whatever Adam says is fine with me.
I mean, I, I'll, I'd be happy to come with the whole committee if, if people can, can make it.
Okay.
I will.
It'll be on Zoom too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, this is April first, we're talking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no pay intended. I really didn't think of that.
All the fools will be there, yes. All right.
Thank you for having me.
Be back. Sorry I was a little late. I never get messed up on daylight savings time.
And that clock up there is wrong.
Can, can I have? I'm very confused here. I thought the bylaw review committee, hey, it's appointed.
And they brought their stuff to the BOS.
That's right.
Right. So are they going to be presenting this at the town meeting?
It's on the warrant, yeah.
It's on the warrant from them, and this is the one that has to do with the lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Well, they have several now. They have several going on.
They're going to present them.
Okay.
The only ones you're concerned with are anything that affects the zoning bylaw, in this case, or repeal, or.
So, in an actual town meeting, the article is presented. Normally, there is some language supported by the police department, supported by the Board of Selectmen, supported by the planning board, right? Okay. Want to stay on top of that.
Oh, yes, you'll have a report, that's why I mentioned the planning board.
Right, however, I just didn't understand, I, I didn't realize, I thought this so bylaw review committee was just a review committee.
And they made recommendations to the Board of Selectmen who accepted them.
Okay.
He presented to us what was accepted by the Board of Selectmen, and it's going to be part of our public hearing to ask questions about what was come, what is to come at the annual town meeting.
Well, I, I verbally, I verbally wrote them a letter about my position or a lot of this stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're welcome to read it.
Did you send it to us?
No, Beth has it.
No, but she.
But I couldn't make a meeting. And then in a previous meeting, I tried to bring up some of these concerns. And I felt that they were saying I was taking too much time, and um, so it got a little difficult.
Well.
That's why I put it in writing.
Okay, so our next opportunity is on April first to discuss everything that will be at the annual town meeting.
Well, Beth, if you would forward a copy of what I said to the bylaw review committee, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will go forward it to the chair, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I think um, the three-point-two MBTA communities of compliance update, there really was, is nothing more to add to that.
We are, Jessica was going to give an update, I don't think she had time.
Yeah.
There was a cohort that she attended today, we're both going to attend cohorts um with different communities. The one she attended today was like with Affordham and some of the more local communities. And then there's another one with some other communities that are not like Townsend, but just to get ideas of how other communities are working on their compliance. Anything from public engagement to, you know, how their bylaws, they're sharing different approaches.
So is, is Milton the only one that has uh refused
No.
to comply?
I'm not up to date on that, but I just know about.
No, it's not, it's coming right now. It started with Holden, and then Newton, then Milton.
So have they all been um?
Well, no, some of them, some of them, it's like, they are publicly protesting.
But Milton.
Milton actually had the town meeting and denied it, okay?
And then the state came back and said that they were not getting any grant.
Exactly, okay. The, the other update, and I think it's interesting, whether it's, my thoughts on it are accurate or not. But remember at one point I said they came in and they mandated this? And then if we approve that, they can come in and mandate something else later.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe.
So, very interesting, in the last two weeks, the Healy administration appropriating X amount of dollars to assist developers in funding these things. That's taxpayers' money.
Everything is taxpayers' money, it's not theirs.
Right, so that brings some big alarms in my head, because now to get what they want, they're going to subsidize the developments.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it's going to get worse.
This is, this is not good, this is not constitutional or right.
Yeah, but we can't go there.
We can't go there.
I know.
So um did you finish your report?
I actually had a very brief one, so if it's okay, I'll just go through the correspondence.
Okay.
Um, so we do have the legal notice posted, the public hearing for um Three Wheeler Road is set for March twenty-seventh, at six forty, and that's remote, that's RZVA, and that is for a special permit for earth removal.
Okay.
That is one. Okay, I'm going to quickly just go through what your file has. Um, there, the letter for the DLTA, um, the ask, if you will, for the DLTA grant, we call it, is number one, we, a town in Townsend has asked for MBTA communities compliance to include in continuing to draft the bylaw, public outreach. Um, this is through MRPC, so education and feedback solicitation, um, continued creation and printing of deliverables as the district selection process is completed. Uh, for number two, this is the one I wanted to mention earlier, um, we're also asking for housing to help promote affordable and accessible housing for blood relatives, elderly, et cetera, or those with limited incomes. The request would include, but not be limited to, review of our accessory bylaw language right now. Any associated regulations and definitions. Provide recommendations and new bylaw language that makes the creation of accessory apartments more attractive to residents, makes eligibility less restrictive, and helps applicants undergo a simpler approval process.
So will we accept it into that?
Well, we're, this is our application, so that's how I'm reading it, just so you know what we're trying to do.
Right.
Because they're not meeting, they, we didn't meet on the seventh.
That's right, yeah.
They're meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay.
And I will be in the air.
Okay. So I. Yeah, maybe, um, yeah, maybe someone else can go, I don't know, another board member or something.
Yeah, if you could just uh
Go where?
Let everybody know, you don't go, it's on Zoom.
Oh.
But it's, MRPC is meeting on the twenty-first, and they may, you may want to know what the agenda is first, because that's the audit night.
Okay. Audit of the financial articles that nobody would really.
Exactly, but if you can find out where it is in the agenda, then you might be able to tune in and see where the, what, what, what should happen then is the commissioners will vote on what gets accepted.
Which town?
Which, which towns get accepted, so it should be that night, I believe.
Good, good.
I just won't be there.
For what?
For the DLTA grant.
Oh, I see.
For what she's just reading, which is on the accessory bylaw apartment.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I don't like to be paranoid about stuff, but there's the street understanding of the word affordable, and there's legal terms related to affordable. So uh, when we use that word, it's, people aren't aware of, you know, like if I say to you, let's shop at Walmart's, it's affordable, then that sounds like a good thing. But in the legal context of affordability, and how it's defined in statutes, relates to fair housing.
Yeah.
And that, that's why I like to eliminate that word altogether, so it cannot be misconstrued, and we either have to make, redefine it as so it doesn't have the legal definition.
Well, if we, if we can get into this grant thing
Yeah.
and ha, and get something presented to us, then we'll have the opportunity to review.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because at least we'll have something, you know?
Yeah.
And we can express our concerns then.
Okay, get them working. All right, great, uh, let's see, uh, just a quick one. Representative, Representative Scarsdale is available, uh, the third Wednesday of every month. She has office hours over in the library from Forte Bye, so put that in your folders. Yeah, um, okay, uh, the special town meeting, uh. The special town meeting, we were asked to emphasize that at this special town meeting on the 19th, the override is going to be discussed.
That's the only thing on the agenda is the override?
They didn't say how much the override's going to be.
No, they don't want to talk about it. But that's all, that's all on that town meeting.
Yeah.
That's it, just that?
Just that, but it's two schools.
Nobody's going to show up?
I will override because I don't want the override. I'm telling everybody.
Nobody wants it.
Well, yeah, but you got to show up and vote it down if you don't want it.
But that will be at the annual town meeting. This is just informational.
But I'll be there.
I'll be there, sure.
The way I was told is that-
This is a special town meeting?
Tell everyone that this is the vote where the override will be discussed or discussed.
That's all it's for.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Discussed.
It's going to be on the floor.
Yeah, I want to know how much they, they want to go on.
Okay, so if they, well, okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time this happened that I remember, I forget which way it went. But it was voted, but it has to go to ballot. So then, at the annual town meeting, it was voted down by ballot.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you can do a two and a half at a, at a town meeting.
You think it has to go on a ballot? Is that where it was?
I think it has to go on a ballot.
Yeah.
I don't know. I never heard of that.
Yeah.
No, I can't, I-
Do you recall that at all?
You know, I think she's right. I think you're right. I think it has to go on the ballot because-
Check with the town administration.
Because it was, it was, it has been voted before at, say, a meeting and had to go to ballot.
Because I remember even, because I never-
I hope so.
I never went to town meetings. It was, I only went to town meeting once in Westford and gave up. But I do remember every time that override came up, the signs would go up and I would go down to the ballot and it'd vote, yeah. So, you're right. I do remember.
I don't think they can do it without a ballot.
Because it's a tax. So, I think they have to do it.
It is a tax.
Just because the CPA's on ballot, too, if I remember, the CPA.
Yes.
Well, I, if you can, that's the email we got from the executive office.
What does that mean?
This is dedicated to the override for the Nishoba Valley Technical School District and the North Middlesex Regional School District budget. Special town meeting is on March 19th at 7:00 P.M. So, that's what we got.
Yeah, that's, it's the end, yeah.
It's an override.
Yeah.
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 You cannot do that at a meeting. You can do it, but it has to be a ballot.
So, this must be step one.
Unless they changed it.
This is the, the way this is wording, it's a dedicated to the override. So, perhaps, the executive office. But this would-
Well, maybe they're going to tell, it's going to go over. So, maybe they're going to tell us how much more money they want than two and a half percent.
Yeah, if it's dedicated to the override, that maybe there will be a ballot vote, too, like you said. Because the way it's written, not, we're not voting an override. It's dedicated to the override of those schools, the way it's written. So, maybe you are preparing for your-
And then they're going to threaten you if you don't pass the override. My daughter, my daughter's on the PTO. She says, she says they're already threatening that if you don't pass the override, there's going to be flooding kids per classroom. And they said, so what? I says, I says, didn't you just go to a teacher conference? And they told you that your daughter's reading level went down a grade because now she's being taught by a computer and the computer graded her at, at a lower level? Because, because last year she was at a fourth grade reading level. Now, now this year she's at a third grade reading level. My daughter says, how, how did that happen?
Really?
And the teacher says, oh, I don't read to them anymore. The computer does all the work and does the assessment. So, the computer assessed her at a third grade reading level. And I said, what, why are we paying, what, what are we paying the school on?
Oh, please.
So.
So, I'm going to go quickly through the other town.
Okay, but let's, let's finish.
Okay.
Because it's after eight.
Okay, let's go.
Decision from the planning board of Pepperell. And here we have the location is 149 163 National Road. Property owner is Mass Composting Group. And they have constructed a furniture, a major site plan approval and land management permit for the construction of two commercial warehouse buildings along with the associated parking, grading, and utilities. Probably one of the biggest projects in the history of Pepperell. So, that's going on. Yep, that was granted February 20th and the decision's on file.
Well, that's a new business, right?
It's two huge warehouses, huge. I don't know if the, what the business will be, but it's-
Is it commercial? I mean, it must be commercial.
Yeah, industrial, commercial trucking.
Good for them.
Where is that going?
Trucking warehouse in Pepperell on National Road. Do you know where the Pepperell Airport is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, does it exist in Pepperell? I definitely know.
Yeah, that's where I went skydiving.
I went there, too.
Notice of decision, this time from the Pepperell Board of Appeals. A variance was granted to allow, for the allowance of two feet from the required 34 side yard setback in order to allow the construction of a new 24 by 34.2 foot two-story structure to the north side of an existing home, which will consist of a 24 by 25 foot garage and a nine by 24 foot combination entryway, mudroom, pantry, and laundry room and will access and enlarge, access an enlarged kitchen and the second floor of the addition.
Wow, that's big.
Detail. I mean, I was trying to visualize that.
Yeah, that's true.
Sounds good. All right, so that's a good thing. And this did not print, unfortunately. Oh, that's it.
That's it?
Yes, so notices are done.
Okay, notices are done. So, we have this, the announcement at special town meeting. We all know, March 19th. Then DLTA Townsend approved request for assistance to MRPC. Okay, that's what she just wrote. And we'll find out, hopefully, on the 21st. And then there was a memorandum of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles, which we have reviewed what ours are. And then education, which Beth has been sending us.
Yes, she has.
Did you do the learning sessions on the 28th of February?
Yeah, excellent. And all the materials are in, in that folder for you.
Okay.
Counting in, um, school enrollment, contrary to belief. More housing does not necessarily increase enrollment. So, everybody's always scared of, you know, more housing, more housing. You know, we're going to have to pay for more students in the school.
No.
It's not-
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
It's just somebody's scare tactic.
But we have to do this to buy.
Okay, citizens planner training collaborative is Saturday, March 16th. I will not be here.
And tomorrow is the last day to register if anybody wants to go.
Okay. And then our next meeting is April 1st and April 8th. And no more in April, right?
There's a second meeting in April, yeah.
At the end?
Before town meeting, not, you know, so.
Oh, yeah. So, after election or something.
Okay.
The 29th, yeah.
Yeah, it's at the end of the month, right? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business